Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 24th, 2023 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. Tonight, the prayer will be coordinated by Alderman Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we all please take a moment for prayer? Heavenly Father, I come to you thanking you once again for giving us life in this beautiful day. Lord, and I ask of you tonight to govern this meeting so that when we make the decisions of this city, we will be mindful to treat each one with dignity and respect. And let us conduct ourselves in a professional manner so that we would be respectful of the decisions and the opinions of others. Amen.
If you would, please stand and pledge by the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible for the good and evil of us.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Before we move to item number three, I wanted to recognize a couple of guests. We have Craven County Commissioner Sherry Hunt in the audience, so welcome. And we also have a Boy Scout troop. So, boys, come on up to the microphone, tell us what troop you're with and your names. We're going to put you on the spot tonight.
Hello, I'm Forrest Pennington from Troop 132. I'm a Life Scout.
Very good.
Bachman Stroud from 132, Star Scout.
Jack Arthur from 132, and I'm a Life Scout.
I am Charles Massey from Troop 132, and I am a Star Scout.
Very good. We're glad to have you tonight. Thanks for coming. Okay, Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. Do we have any discussion or entertain a motion to do so?
Mayor, before we move to approve the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that item number nine be removed from tonight's agenda and rescheduled for our February 14th meeting and that sufficient time be allocated for public input on that matter.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. I'd like a roll call starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
No.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
No. Motion carries. Item number nine will be tabled to the next meeting. How about the rest of the agenda?
Motion to approve as an amendment.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. About the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges relative to leased parking rates. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, at the Board's retreat in November, a discussion was held about downtown parking in the city's leased parking lots. We currently have three lots that we lease out. The Pollock Lot, which is across the street from us, the Craven Lot, which is beside Morgan's Restaurant, and the Hancock Lot, which is basically behind the Chelsea. Altoled, there are approximately 127 spaces that we lease out. Those spaces have been at the same rate since 2011, so if you're looking for a limited parking space to lease, that is Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and that's $20 per month. Unlimited is $30 per month. And we're making the recommendation to increase those fees for the limited rate to go to $35 per month and for the unlimited rate to go to $45 per month. We did reach out to all of the leaseholders, and they have been notified of a public hearing that is scheduled to take place this evening. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to conduct public hearing.
Well, we'll open a public hearing.
Okay.
If there's any questions or any comments.
None.
Hearing none. We'll open a public hearing to discuss the ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges relative to leased parking rules. If anyone has any comments, you can come forward.
Sure, if you could, just come to the microphone, please.
And I know very little about this matter, but my question would be, is there an opportunity for others to lease at that rate or just the people who currently have been able to park for a dollar a day?
Mr. Hughes.
I'll answer. There are currently spaces available for lease, but it's not 100% occupancy, so once the proposed rates are approved, then yes.
Okay, so there's a process of applying to the city?
Correct.
You know how many spaces are currently available for lease?
It depends per lot. The Craven Lot's 100% leased as of right now. The Hancock Lot, about 85% leased, and the Pollock Lot is about 85% leased at this point as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have a motion to close the public hearing. Have a second?
Okay.
Several seconds. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call. Actually, let's do a voice vote on closing the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. What's the motion of the Board on item number seven? Or do we want to have some more discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges relative to leased parking rates.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, on item number seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion of converting the Pollock Street Parking Lot from leased spaces to a pay-to-park mobile lot. Mr. Hughes.
So, Mayor, also at our work session we held in November, we had a discussion on converting the leased lot across the street to pay-to-park. And so, at that time, we talked about possibly having a kiosk in place, and since that time, we've reached out to a variety of vendors to talk about the trends that are currently going on in pay-to-park parking. And what we've kind of looked at and where things are going across the board nationwide is the mobile app for this. And so, the most responsive vendor that we have talked to is Park Mobile, and I'm going to give you a demonstration on what it's capable of in just a second. But on your screen, you will see the parking lot we're referring to, the Pollock Street Lot across the street. And so, the Park Mobile app is the most popular app currently with parking. It's the third most popular mobile app for travel and destination there is behind Google Earth, I'm sorry, behind Google Maps and Waze. They have a variety of customers that are currently using this in North Carolina, as you will see a variety of those. We've reached out to several of our counterparts to get an idea on how this app is working for them. A few have struggled with it, but overall, folks are very pleased with it. And the ones that have really struggled are the ones that are trying to do parking on the streets as well. And I just want to let you know that the only place that we're looking at doing this is in a leased lot. We're not looking at doing any pay-to-park on the streets or anything like that throughout the city. So, the next item you're going to see is what the app looks like. So, this can be downloaded. It's easy to find. So, even if you're coming into New Bern from another location, it would pop up where parking is, and it would automatically tell you how much it costs to park there. What we're seeing across the board is a dollar per hour to park, and some folks are doing basically $8 a day to park. And so, we're not coming back with a recommendation at this time, but once we finish this, we just want to give a little direction on how the Board feels, what you're comfortable with us pursuing. There are a variety of ways to pay. So, on the app, you can pay by the app, you can pay by going to their website, and you can pay by text. If you don't have a smartphone, you're able to call in a number that is located on the signs that the vendor provides. If you don't have a credit card or debit card, you can use other means of payment, whether that be PayPal or your checking account and things like that as well. So, they try to make it as easy as possible without having an actual cashier on site. Some of the app features, of course, you get information when your time is about to expire by email and also text messages and app notifications. And if you happen to be lost when you're visiting our downtown and can't remember where you parked, you can actually get a notification on exactly where you're at and where you're parked in our lot. Now, this lot here only has 36 or 37 spaces, so this is a good start if we want to pursue this. If it works out well, then we've got the opportunity in the future to expand this to our other leased lots. Let's see here. So, this also gives you just a little bit more information about parking availability and shows what it looks like on the maps as you're coming through a town. The enforcement piece, that's the biggest question that I had for our consultants when we talked. We currently have parking control in downtown New Bern. The equipment they use works with this equipment. So, as our parking control officers are riding by, it automatically populates who is paid to park, and so that helps the attendants with that. Now, our parking attendants only work basically eight to four, Monday through Friday, and so we're having conversations with the police department on how best to monitor evenings and weekends on this. And so, we're having further discussions in case the Board wants to continue with this process, and we think we can work that out as well. The dashboard for this, the backup house is very robust and gives good information on the peak times for the number of parking, how many spaces are used, how much revenue is generated for a certain spot, and it's a good way to start if we want to break into this as opposed to continuing to have this be a leased lot. As I said, they also provide signage, which I'll show you in just a second. But implementation for this takes approximately 60 days from the time we said, yeah, let's start this, which would fall in line if we want to pursue this with when the proposed fees are going to change for the leased lots, which would be approximately April of this year. And Park Mobile does have a robust process where they provide a lot of good information for social media posts and things like that to help alert the public. An example of signage looks like what you see on your screen. Basically, each parking lot that they have has a zone number that you enter in, and that's how you determine where you're going to be parking. It's not based on the individual space, but the parking lot as a whole to where you would be parking. And it also has QR codes that you can click on to get to the app as well. And then, there's also something to help you with paying for that as well. Signage is customized, so the city of New Bern would be on that also. So, what would this cost us? There's no cost to us to use an app like this. There is a user fee when a customer clicks on this. It's approximately $0.04 or $0.05. That's how the mobile app makes their money, and then the city would retain whatever the fee to park is. So, if we ended up doing a dollar per hour or whatever that fee may be, the customer would be charged approximately $1.45. Or if it was for three hours, it would be $3.45. Or if it was a full day and we chose the eight hours for that, it would be $8.45 for the day. Happy to answer any questions you have, and if you would like us to continue in this direction, we're happy to do that.
Board?
Foster, what are we going to do with the city employees that park over there?
So, we do have an ability to have certain spaces blocked off for city employees like we currently do. Parking control is still going to enforce those things, but currently, our city employees have stickers that they put in the cars to let folks know that they should be there.
Foster, how long of a trial period are you looking to have on this lot?
I think it would be realistic. Now, the vendor has no timeline for this. If we started this, we could stop it at any time, but I'd say realistically, nine months to a year would be a good trial size to see if we want to continue to look at this in the future.
So, you mentioned we have how many spaces there? Thirty?
We have 36 spaces.
36. And how many of those spaces are city employee parking?
Approximately five at this time.
Is that because we have parking closed here or is that?
No.
Full-time?
Full-time. We traditionally have that.
Foster, I certainly think that we need to proceed in some form or fashion. My only concern with the app is, it's no secret, we're a tourist town, we're a retirement city, and my concern is folks that are not as technologically advanced as others. I recognize that you can call. It seems like they're trying to make some accommodations and make it as easy as possible. I know we had looked at the kiosk before, and there was obviously an initial cost, and there was an annual maintenance fee on that. Have you run analysis to see what that looks like as far as a revenue sample versus this?
So, just to give you an idea, the kiosk, there is a one-time fee for that, and depending on what type of kiosk we went with, that would be anywhere from $7,000 to $9,000 upfront cost. And on the annual recurring cost, we're looking at about $1,500 for that. Plus, there's also going to be that, whatever that fee is that the vendor charges us to use their app on a regular basis. And so, this is a good way with an app to start off where it's no cost to us. If we decide, hey, this doesn't work out, then we can stop it. Or if we decide, yeah, this is working good, but our customers would really like to have a way to use cash or coins to pay for something, then we could look into implementing this.
Does the app tell you how many spaces are available when you try to book one?
It does.
Okay.
But it just doesn't rent a specific space.
Right.
Math-wise, how long would it take us to actually recruit our money back?
So, we're recouping our money with the, well, if we're, let me say this. So, in 2022, the Pollock Street Lot generated $7,080 in revenue, okay? So, if we're looking at a dollar an hour per space, we're going to have an opportunity to make a lot more money. We'll at least double our money within the first year, at least.
Is it only, is it 24 hours a day or is it after 5:00, anybody can park there?
What we're seeing is folks are charging a dollar an hour up to a certain thing for the 24 hours, and you can only rent it a maximum of 24 hours at a time. So, one day is the max. You can basically pay to park. You can't do it for a weekend. It's one day at a time.
But they could just go on their app and redo it, correct?
The next day, yes.
Okay. But I think my question was, will the fees continue after 5:00? Now, I think after 5:00, anybody can park over there.
Yes, the fees would continue. So, if you wanted to come in the evening, and the evenings are really the time when we have some issues with parking, yes, you would have to pay to park in that lot.
Which is a policy decision, so if we decided that we did not want to enforce it 24 hours, we could say that the pay parking is only during certain times, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Board, is anyone opposed to staff moving forward and proceeding with the next step?
No.
Is that what you need?
I do. So, we'll come back to the next meeting, and we'll talk about fees and charges and go from there.
That might be a record for the city of New Bern to discuss parking that quickly. So, kudos to everybody for your homework. All right, we will move on to item number nine, to consider adopting a resolution to sell, I'm sorry, we skipped that one. Item number 10, consider adopting a resolution to sell tax parcel ID 8015023 on Neuse Avenue. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, the Board adopted a resolution on November 22nd of this past year to initiate the upset bid process. After receiving an offer of $3,000 for Mrs. Phalas, the property is a vacant 0.23 acre parcel that was acquired by the city and county in 2006 through tax foreclosure. It has a tax value of $6,000. If the property is sold for the initial bid, the city will receive $1,266.67, and the county will receive $1,733.33 from those proceeds.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the sale of tax parcel ID 8-015-023 on Neuse Avenue.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Can we do the second one?
Yeah, do it together.
Alderman Prill, would you have a problem combining item number 11 with item number 10?
No, if I'm not mistaken, it's the same individual that is purchasing both.
That same individual has three on this, 10, 11, and 12.
You want to do 12, too?
I'll amend the motion to include all three lots.
Okay. You're good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion? If not, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 13, consider adopting a resolution to participate in the NC Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System.
I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to make this presentation.
Good afternoon. So, the city's cash reserves are currently invested with North Carolina Capital Management Trust, which is, for the last 40 years, the only option that we've had for the state of North Carolina. An opportunity exists for the city to participate in the North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems, which is the NC class, which is a financial and investment service that provides diversified investing. North Carolina class investments are limited to the investments outlined in the North Carolina General Statutes 159.3. If the Board adopts a resolution approving the participation in the system, New Bern will enter into an interlocal agreement to participate in a pool investment with Lincoln County and Town of Hope Mills, with New Bern being the third trustee. Tonight, we have here with us Dan Cluse with North Carolina Class and Dan Starr with Public Trust. They are going to provide a quick intro, and will also be available for questions.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board. Thank you very much for having us. As Ms. Ostrom said, my name is Matt Starr. I represent Public Trust Advisors, and my associate, Dan Cluse, is here as well. Public Trust Advisors is a registered investment advisor. We are headquartered in Denver, Colorado. We've been in business for just about 11 years now, and our company focuses primarily and really solely only on investing public funds and public assets nationally. Our specialty is the design, development, and launch of what we refer to as local government investment pools. As Ms. Ostrom alluded to, North Carolina is very unique nationally because there's only one investment pool provider in the state, and that's the North Carolina Capital Management Trust Program. Public Trust has developed overseas, from an investment standpoint, pools similar to North Carolina Capital Management Trust in 11 different states to the tune of about $60 billion of public assets under our watch nationally. We have a very unique opportunity here in North Carolina, we believe. We'd like to provide additional safety and diversification to the local governments throughout the state. The fund will be AAA rated. It is designed to protect your assets and your taxpayer dollars, and we have a tried and true track record of being able to do so adequately. So, with that, I'll turn it to Dan to provide a few more insights on North Carolina.
Mayor and Alderman, thank you very much. As Matt mentioned, the opportunity, we feel largely, in speaking with a lot of local government units around the state of North Carolina in the past two years, there's been a need. As a lot of you probably know, think about your most basic banking, you want to be able to have at least two or three banks to choose from for your personal checking, just like the city probably at some point, I hope you don't do RFP soon, can really, they're painful. But if the city looked a bit out its banking, you would want to have at least two or three respondents. So, as Matt mentioned, as we did our homework and due diligence here, we feel super excited that we're going to be bringing this to the plate for all NC LGUs. And with Ms. Ostrom and a couple other founding trustees, we feel confident that we have the right oversight board, working with Public Trust and NC Class as the investment advisor and administrator. So, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. So, what you're saying is that would we put in our money in a pool with two or three other cities?
Correct. And so, North Carolina Class is established pursuant to 15930, which of course governs the eligible investments for local governments statewide. 15930 has a section that allows for the establishment of what we call an interlocal agreement, and the interlocal agreement, in this case for North Carolina Class, would be established by and between the city of Hope Mills, the Town of Hope Mills, Lincoln County, and the city of New Bern. And in doing so, the cooperative, if you will, is opened up, and every LGU statewide will be eligible to participate in this fund. So, as an example, one of our larger programs is a local government investment pool that we manage in our home state in Colorado. And I say "our" home state loosely, I'm actually a North Carolinian myself, but our headquarters are in Colorado. The program is called CaloTrust, and over 1,800 local governments in the state of Colorado pool their money cooperatively into the program. And what that allows for is economies of scale. So, as you can imagine, you've got counties that have significant amounts of funds and liquid assets they didn't invest, but they'll receive the same competitive yields that the smallest fire district or special district in the state will receive. So, it works very similar to a money market fund, if you will.
So, the way that, I'm trying to understand, the way it's broken down that each county will divide the gross amount of money from the investment, and it'll be split like down the middle?
The investments or the dividends that you'll receive will be based on your participation in the program. And so, while the pool as a whole will have a collective, collection of assets, your individual, you know, the city's individual assets are partitioned such that you're going to receive daily income based on the dollar amount that you're investing.
How much you put in. That's how you're paid.
That's correct.
Based on that.
Yep.
So, Hope Mills, let's say Hope Mills puts in $25, and we put in $10. So, we wouldn't get the gross that Hope Mills would get. We would get a less amount of money, but we would receive some income from that.
Right. You'll receive the same percentage dividend as everyone else. In other words, we'll print a daily yield.
You just lost me.
Yep.
And you said they would receive the same amount.
So, let me put it to you this way. So, if you're receiving 1% at your bank and you have $100 at the bank, you're going to get $1 in interest. The same bank, same interest rate, $1,000 is invested, they're going to receive $10 of interest, right?
Okay.
So, we're going to have the same interest rate available to everyone that invests in the program.
Okay. I was just trying to help the individuals at home that is listening.
Yeah.
To make sure that they get a chance to understand as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And so, I did want to say, Kim, we currently invest our reserves in the North Carolina Capital Management Fund. Kim, how much are we currently investing in that?
We have $67 million in North Carolina Capital Management.
And so, what this is, this is just another option. And, and so, what this is, this is just another option to invest in, in another fund. This fund has been approved by the LGC as well, and if the board has an interest in that.
And when you say that we have that much there, how often can we go pool from that if we need?
At any time.
At any time.
There are no restrictions on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the proper question is, but how, Kim, are you okay with this being safe for our funds? I mean, no disrespect, but what would happen if this company went belly up? Where would our money go?
It's an excellent question, and I'm glad you asked that. So, historically, local government investment pools have been around for some forty-five or fifty years. Forty-eight out of fifty states have at least one local government investment pool. It is extraordinarily rare for an investment pool of this nature to ever lose a dollar. In our history at Public Trust, we've managed, as I said, we manage currently about sixty billion dollars of assets. We've never failed to meet a redemption request. In other words, as Mr. Manager had alluded to, you, you have access to these funds every single day, and the expectation is that you're going to be able to draw on those funds and be able to earn a little bit of interest on top of that certain investment.
But I think his question is, are you insured? That would be a better word to use, insured.
Yeah, it, it's a good question. We are not a bank, we don't carry FDIC coverage, nor would a capital management trust, for example. We believe that having a standard and poorest triple-A rating really goes a long way to give people additional comfort. But these investments are extraordinarily, you know, for lack of a better term, they're very vanilla. We invest in things like fully guaranteed and backed government securities, the, the top rated credits, commercial paper, triple-A rated, bank deposits, and fully collateralized repurchase agreements. I know we're going down into a little bit of a rabbit hole there, I don't, the, the fact of the matter is that these programs are designed with safety being first and foremost in mind.
So, what you're saying is you're not insured, but the, the amount of money that you're dealing with, you're confident that you can carry out?
Very much so.
Okay.
When, when was the, when was the action taken to change the statute at the General Assembly to allow this?
It's a, it's a question, as a matter of fact, the statute always exists, as far back as, as I know, this language existed. And so, the statute has several different pieces to it. The first actually introduces capital management trust as a cooperative investment program because, as you know, it's, it's overseen in some capacity at the state level. And then, in the same statute, just below it, it allows for an interlocal cooperative that's established by local government units such as yourselves.
And going back to some of the previous lines of questions, reading over the information that Kim's given me, and questions with Kim too, the custodian is a bank and not these gentlemen. So, you know, I would assume that they would be insured. And the fact that the trust has to go through an annual audit and report it back to the trustees, you know, there is oversight, it's not a fly-by-night operation.
Kim, Kim, out of the sixty-seven million, what did, what was our return last year? Any idea?
I, I, I don't have that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Would, that would, that would show up on our income statement, correct?
There's multiple ones in there, there's, so, I'd have to dig it up, I can start looking. But we talked a little bit about that.
Absolutely. One of, one of the, the benefits of North Carolina Class, when you compare it to the investments made by the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, we, we do have an opportunity to make different eligible investments, and it will allow for particularly, in, in a time like this where interest rates are doing so well, for there to be anywhere between twenty-five and fifty basis points of additional interest income to all the participants in North Carolina Class on a daily basis. And historically speaking, I have great confidence in sharing that information. Right now, as a point of reference, the NCCMT program, the program you're currently in, is offering about four, uh, four point two five in daily interest. Our programs nationally are anywhere from four point four five to four point seven five. And so, in, in very short order, our expectation is that we'll be out yielding the competition here in the state.
And to answer your question, Alderman Astor, I've actually, I've not been on the forefront here, trailblazing and, and, you know, being a founding trustee, but we worked with the Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, and we, I oversaw about seventy-five million in, in our, our fund as well, and that's definitely the same thing, it's a pooled investment fund for local governmental units and education.
And so, Kim, saying, you know, we have sixty-seven million invested, what do you, if the board approves this, what do you think your initial investment is going to be with them?
So, I, I believe from, the next steps are, we have to go through, you know, establish, have a meeting, sign the paperwork, and then, I think you said after the first meeting would be?
Yeah, probably between thirty and forty-five days following an initial trustee meeting. We would look to launch the funds and, and seek funding, not only from the initial trustees and initial partners, but Dan and I have been working very hard the last two years, working with governments around the state. We're very confident we're going to have a number of initial participating entities. But more direct to the question, we're not seeking to, to have any massive amounts of funding. If you have sixty-seven million dollars in the NCCMT, we're a diversification tool. We'd love to see five or ten million dollars here, so you have something to compare it to as a board, and you can see that the returns over time, I think, will generate additional income for your community.
So, I guess a little more to the point, a minimum investment is?
Over time, there is no minimum. It could be one dollar, and you can bring your account all the way to zero dollars. It's also important to note that there are no fees related to the program. Essentially, we're offering what we refer to as a net yield, for a small management fee that comes out of the yield before it goes to the participants. You don't have any fees, there's no banking fees, there's no account fees, you'll never see a fee on your statement.
Does this transaction have to be approved by the LGC?
It does not need to be approved by the LGC. The LGC has reviewed all the documents that you have included in your board packet. They were developed in part by Public Trust Advisors, as well as our legal counsel here in North Carolina is McGuire Woods. We work with Mary, Mary Kay Nasher, who's out of the Raleigh office, McGuire Woods. And we then sent all those documents to the LGC for their review, which they did, and they provided a, a little bit of feedback, but they represented saying this is absolutely an allowable investment for North Carolina.
What, what was the feedback, do you remember?
Yeah, it was, it was minor things, they wanted to make sure, their, their, and rightly so, as the Local Government Commission, their primary focus is making sure that local governments do not have access to investments that are not allowable under statute. And so, we had some language that they did not like at the bottom of our investment policy that essentially said, and any future investments that may be allowed under North Carolina code? And they said, no, we, we prefer you to remove that, the code is the code, if you take that out, we're fine.
I believe you mentioned it, but how long did you say you've been established?
So, our firm at Public Trust has been established, was established in two thousand and eleven, we're about eleven years old. That being said, I've worked in the local government investment pool space for almost twenty years. Our managing partners at Public Trust, somewhere upwards of forty. So, we have a long history of working specifically in this local government space.
Mayor, before we move forward, I just, I'm not a finance director, I'm not an investor, a, a broker or investor, and, you know, I just feel that, you know, with us investing with, and no disrespect to your company, us investing with this company, I think we just, I personally would like to get a better understanding. When we're talking about, you know, we're talking about tax dollars here, taxpayers' dollars here when we're talking about investing, and I just would like to get a better understanding before we, we as a board make a decision on this.
Well, I, I'll say I've worked with, I think, four finance directors, and every one of them I've asked, what can we do as far as investment, they've always said nothing. So, I, I don't know if you guys came knocking, or if Kim went to you, but, you know, kudos for finding a potential opportunity. My, my, I think my last question, Kim, would be, I heard their answers, fees going to them and for the service they provide, but what about fees from taking the money out of where it is now before it gets transferred? Is there a fee for that?
We do have some fees that are assessed, I, I can't tell you how much that is right now though, but yes, I believe.
Well, I, I would probably be in the boat with Alderman Best if that's the case, because I want to see how much it's going to cost us to move money. If it's financially feasible and beneficial, then obviously, let's do it. But the yields were fairly close with what you said, we just need to make sure that we're not swapping one account for another with no return.
And you have to remember too, that we're talking, you know, three million dollars, let's just say. Well, first of all, the initial investment is a dollar, minimum investment is a dollar. So, I guess, we're, our revenue that's coming in would be offsetting what we're transferring over.
So, tonight, you're asking for us to approve a resolution to participate, but you're not actually asking for the money tonight, is that correct? So, it would probably be beneficial for us to not kick another can down the road to make this decision tonight, and then, at a later date, we can decide if we want to put a dollar in or a million dollars, is that?
With all due respect, I, I think that would be wonderful. And if there are any further questions, and if you'd like for myself or Dan to provide additional detail or presentational materials at a future board meeting prior to discussing an amount being transferred, we'd be more than happy to do so.
Okay. Alderman Best, does that help ease your concern a little bit, that we're not actually making a transaction, we're just moving forward with the potential?
For more discussion?
Correct.
Yes.
Any more questions from the board? If not, entertain a motion for item number thirteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to participate in the NC Cooperative Liquid, Liquid Asset Security System. Second?
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Should there be some other type of, should we do some, some type of addition to this amendment since we're not actually participating for as money-wise at this time?
I, I don't know that that's necessary because the, the motion is to adopt a resolution to participate, there's no dollar amount associated with it, so they would have to come back. I'm assuming you'd have to ask for a budget amendment to move the funds?
There is a dollar.
There is one dollar?
One dollar.
One dot, so there's one dollar attached to it, so, that's our exposure is one dollar.
Because my, my understanding that right now, our participation would be to establish the trust, and then to establish the board of trustees before any assets get moved. And so, that was the purpose of tonight's resolution.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, hearing none more discussion, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Before we go to discussion again, I'm trying to get clarity. I thought Alderman Best said, let us wait and have further discussion.
Well, I think the further discussion is going to be, once this gets established, how much we want to make an investment. If, it could be the one dollar that we're saving tonight, or it could be ten million dollars, it's whatever the board decides to do. But until they establish this trust to have that conversation, there's really no conversation to be had, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brunson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Trent Road Red Robin Project, and do you want to do fifteen together?
Yes, we can do both together, and we'll ask Mr. Charles to come up and make this presentation.
And then, for the record, item number fifteen is also to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Trent Road Bank Stabilization Project.
Good evening, board, mayor. These two request resolutions are for the Red Robin Trent Road Bank Stabilization Project, that was identified when we did ARP allocations, and the allocations came through the, to funding for both the Red Robin Trent Road ditch, and then the Trent Road Bank Stabilization, which we in-house refer to that as the FLYS ditch, that's alongside of FLYS bike shop. We have put these out to bid, unfortunately, both came in with too few bidders to open, and so we had to extend the bid time till a later date. Now that we have both of them back in and permits in hand for the Red Robin Trent Road project, and then, we should have our last permit in hand for the FLYS project mid-February, so we can turn those loose. And what we're requesting is that you authorize the city manager to execute any contracts in these amounts for both of these projects.
Board have questions?
If there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Trent Road Red Robin Project, and also to execute a contract for the Trent Road Bank Stabilization Project.
Second?
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
George, if I could, a quick question before we vote. Just out of curiosity, the, the two bids that were received, you know, for the Trent Road Red Robin Project, the first item, there was quite a, a difference in the, the two bids that were received versus the, the bank stabil, bank stabilization project. The same two bidders, they were much closer together with their bids. Any idea or explanation as to why there was such a difference?
It's hard to read into how the contractors figure each project, you know. I think sometimes we see how, how available their crews are, dictate a little bit on how they, they implement their, their bid numbers. I'd just be speculating to guess though, on, on those, on, on the quantity numbers being higher from one job to the next.
All right, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brunson.
Alderman Brunson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries, item number sixteen, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-two twenty-three. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor, the budget ordinance amendment appropriates fifteen thousand dollars from the MSD funds to cover the cost of pruning trees downtown. We currently have approximately ninety-four trees that need to be pruned. And just to give you a little bit of background, annually, public works will come down and do some general pruning of the trees, but it's gotten to the point where we need to work on some crowning of those trees and to get some of, some of the branches off some of the, of the buildings downtown. So, we have reached out to a contractor to get a price for this. We have approximately twelve trees that would be pruned in James Reed Lane. The, the rest of those trees are the silkovas, the which are street trees, and they are on Craven, Pollock, and Middle Street. The next item under the budget amendment is recognizing one thousand dollar Walmart grant awarded to the Fire Department to purchase water rescue equipment.
Board have questions? If not, entertain a motion for item number sixteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt a budget ordinance amendment for twenty-two twenty-three.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brunson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seventeen, consider adopting an amendment for the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Project Grant Fund. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to make this presentation.
The state of North Carolina awarded the city a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through the Environmental Enhancement Grant Program for stormwater improvements planning for the midsection of the Duffy Field Canal. This ordinance will amend the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund to recognize the grant funds.
Board have questions?
Yes, I do. When you say midsection of the canal?
Yes, I do. Um, when you say midsection of the canal, um, Mr. Hughes or Mr. Childs, where, where are you particularly speaking of this canal? Because this canal runs all through the city.
I'm sure George is going to tell us.
Uh, the, the midsection, this is, uh, part of the stream restoration grant that, that's been given. So, that is the section of the Duffy Field Canal that's surrounding Hinton Park.
Okay.
So, that's the allocation we're talking about right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
It's a pleasure of the board on number seventeen.
If there's no more questions, I make a motion to adopt an amendment to the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number eighteen, appointment. So, as a reminder to the board, we had two commissioners resign from the Redevelopment Commission. Uh, I've made the suggestion that in the past, it had been a, uh, sort of a race to whoever made the motion first and that, uh, was on the table to be voted on. I made the suggestion that would offer everybody the opportunity to nominate up to two individuals. So, um, what I would, uh, I had some discussion with the attorney. We, we bounced this around a little bit because we got to thinking about it. And if there's, everybody recommends two people and everybody rec- votes for the two people you recommend, we're at a stalemate until something changes. So, uh, Mr. Davis recommended that, uh, in our motion or whoever decides to make this motion on this process, give every board member three votes. So, naturally, I'm assuming you would probably vote for the two people that you're going to nominate, but that also gives you another vote. Because what's ended up happening is the top two people will end up getting the appointments. And then, once we figure out who those top two individuals are, the clerk made me aware this mo- this afternoon that there's different term expiration. So, I think the best thing to do is let's figure out who the two individuals are going to be and then let's figure out which ones we want to plug into th- those two different terms. Because I think one ends in twenty-four and one's in, ends in twenty-six. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we can have discussion, debate, uh, conversation about it. Uh, I think the clerk has some ballots ready and this is public record. So, when this vote is done, uh, those will be entered into the minutes on who you voted for. So, there's no secret ballot. Uh, but I thought that this was an opportunity to provide a little bit more open opportunity for people to make some nominations. So, any discussion?
Yes, I would like us, when we consider the candidates for the Redevelopment Commission, to consider, um, the candidates who understand the culture of the redevelopment area, the residents that live there, uh, to have some understanding of what brought us to this point, that we need to redevelop a community or that we have a blighted community, that those candidates need to understand what poverty looks like, to have some general understanding. And not only that, but be willing to have the conversations, whether those conversations include the differences in ethnicity, that we be able to sit down and, and talk things out. And again, I always say that history does not repeat itself, that we have these candidates that are boots on the ground, that understand all of these fundamental principles that need to guide the Redevelopment Commission.
Well, having said that, I, I, I appreciate that. And, uh, when I was looking for candidates, I, candidates I kind of interviewed, I told them I wanted a person of action. I wanted to nominate people that were going to get something done, uh, as opposed to having just a bunch of great ideas and sitting around and talking about it. Uh, so, that's in addition to yours, I'd say. Uh, I'm looking for somebody to bring some movement and some action to that board.
Any other comments?
Do you need a, a motion for that process?
Ms. Attorney, could you clarify?
Yes. Um, I think your first item of business for this particular item is to vote on the process that you'd like to utilize in collecting the nominations. And then, once, um, you've decided what process you'd like to use, you can implement that process.
Given that, I think we have four candidates who have expressed an interest in being appointed to the Redevelopment Commission.
I count six.
We only received information today.
I, I have, I have two.
I've not had a chance to review the background of, you know, two of those four. Uh, so, I, I would not be comfortable taking any action on appointing anybody this evening, um, you know, until I've had a chance to review their backgrounds and, um, maybe talk to some other board members, you know, about those individuals.
Isn't that the point? Where we're at right now to further discussion?
Yeah.
Of these, uh...
The Redevelopment Commission is looking for some support, is what they're looking for. And if we delay it, it's going to be another month before they have someone.
And I'm counting ten.
I have two myself.
And I, I have two myself.
So, there's twelve.
But the question still remains that the names that are submitted, as Alderman Preel said, if we have no clue who the person is or their background, then how can we come to a decision? Some folks I know, some people I don't. But I certainly would like to give everyone the benefit of the doubt to cast a vote for the person that is right for the job. And the only way we can do that fairly is that we know the person.
So, each Alderman can give a synopsis of this person that they're trying, of these two people that we're nominating, putting forth out there to be nominated. We can give you some information on them tonight, which...
I'm prepared to do that.
But that's what, that's what I would recommend.
I am prepared.
I'm prepared to do that as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that each Alderman and Mayor that has nominations will present whatever candidates they have. After those nominations have been made, then each Alderman and Mayor will get a vote for three to be recorded by the clerk and she can give us the top two candidates.
Ms. Mosley, are you good with that?
Yes, I think the only point of clarity that you might want to consider is whether those three votes are cumulative or have to be given to a different candidate. So, you can, can you cast all your ballots for one person, spread them across two, or have to vote one per candidate?
Nice point. I had assumed you would vote for three different candidates.
I did as well.
So, as a point of clarification, you vote for three different candidates.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion?
I've got a question for the, uh, the attorney. One of the candidates, um, happens to be my wife. Brenda, I think, discussed with Scott today just to make sure that there would be no conflict of interest should she be one of the candidates, um, appointed to the Redevelopment Commission, um, given that I serve as an ex-official member of the Redevelopment Commission. Now, Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott did not indicate that there would be any conflict of interest should that happen?
That's correct.
Okay. But now, in the process that we're discussing this evening, I, I fully intended to recuse myself from v- voting for my wife, although I don't know whether I need to. So, my question for the attorney is, should I be anticipating recusing myself from voting for my wife? Or can I fully participate?
That's a very good question.
Without any potential conflict of interest?
Very good question. So, just as one point of clarity to the nomenclature, the, excuse me, the three Alder people who sit on the Redevelopment Commission are liaisons. So, they don't occupy a specific seat, they don't count towards the quorum, they don't have voting powers. Um, your role, excuse me, is to communicate between that commission and your board and to bring that wisdom to the table. So, that's the context of your membership on the Redevelopment Commission. Our office has, um, reviewed the applicable statutes and has determined that no legal conflict of interest exists. As to your question about recusal, you would have to ask your fellow board members here tonight, um, to recuse you based on a specific basis. And if your basis is, um, one that satisfies one of the requirements in statute, you certainly can. If, if your basis is a general uncomfortableness, um, that's not a statutory basis. However, if you're interested in avoiding the appearance of impropriety, then you certainly could ask your fellow board members to allow you to sit that vote out.
Are you good with that?
My, I guess my question for the other board members is, where is your comfort level with regards to me voting, uh, potentially for my wife?
Well, I personally have no problem with that because you are an ex-official member and you have no voting power on the Redevelopment Commission. So, I don't have a problem with it. And I don't think, I personally don't think that you need to recuse yourself.
I would be concerned if you did recuse yourself because you are an ex-official member and you would have to then live with the, um, whatever decision the board makes without having a voice at all.
That's correct.
So, you know, I, I think if you can set your opinions about your wife aside and look at the resumes, then I'd, I'm okay with that.
Alderman Preel, if you're willing to nominate your wife and either vote or not vote for her, that's, you know, kudos to you. After twenty-one years of marriage, um, I don't think I'd put myself in that position. That's, that's completely up to you, sir. I have no issue from a standpoint. So, we have a motion on the table. We have a second. So, I'd like to do a roll call vote, starting with Alderman Royal on the process.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. So, um, now we will start the process of taking nominations. Uh, I'll give you a, a break, Alderman Preel, and I'll start down here with, uh, Alderman Brinson, so you can weigh the pros and cons of your decision.
Okay. Um, I, I had sent this out this afternoon, but you may or may not have had a chance to, to take a look at it. But, uh, my two nominees are Eric Thompson and Kelly Kaiser. Uh, Eric Thompson is a real estate agent here in the city of New Bern, uh, New Bern native, uh, has his own brokerage and, um, management, rental management company as well. Uh, so, I feel he's pretty suited, uh, to figuring out what would be good for the Redevelopment Commission as far as a real estate's perspective. Um, I also want to nominate Kelly Kaiser. Uh, she is a, a Koch City native, uh, and lives here in New Bern as well. She's worked for the Warehouser Company for, uh, over thirty years and has retired from them. But a- as a accounting and project analyst for their real estate holdings and now is, works as a contractor and is helping assist the West New Bern Development, basically marry up the developer with the home builders, uh, which is what I thought we, the previous board had empowered the Redevelopment Commission to do. So, those are my two nominations and I think that they would serve the city and the Redevelopment Commission very well.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, do you have those?
I do.
Alderman Best?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, the two, um, outstanding citizens of New Bern that, um, I would like to nominate, nominate would be, um, number one is, um, Ms. Antoinette Bosky. She is a native New Bernian. Um, she, um, began her career in twenty-twelve with her master's in administration with a concentration in public and nonprofit administration. She has volunteered with local nonprofit organizations. Um, after Hurricane Florence, she became the Chair of Case Management Long-Term Recovery, um, Group and also of C C D R A. And a lot of know, us know that as by Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance. Um, from that, she moved on and landed, um, her seat with Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, um, as the Neighborhood Revitalization Director. Um, she's been very instrumental in home repairs, programs, assets-based community development. She's really familiar with, um, community development. Um, she now serves as a district administrator for, um, Guardian Adeliten for Craven, Carterick, and Pamlico County. Um, she serves her community by volunteering. Um, she also volunteers here locally with, uh, Abundant Life Community Service, Craven Arts Council, the Duffy Field Resident Council, and New Bern's People Assembly. Um, I think she would be a great fit for this commission. She brings a lot of experience, um, to our city and she's been involved with a lot of, uh, recovery efforts. Um, the next person I'd like to nominate is a Mr. Jimmy Dillahun. He is a native New Bernian. He has served over forty years in, um, his con- general contracting business and he's also served over forty-some years in the military. Um, he currently has J E Dillahun and Associates. That is his business and he specializes in retrofitting, elevation, of course, construction building, asbestos and lead removal and stucco. He's, um, currently, he, in the past and currently, he has contracts with surrounding counties, not just Craven County. He has also had contracts in the past with the city of New Bern and has served on numerous city boards, which is the Board of Adjustment, the Planning and Zoning Board. Um, I too, he has, um, served his community and he has given back to his community. And I feel that he has a lot to offer this commission. And I also think that he would be a great fit for this commission as well. And those are my two.
Ms. Clerk, do you have those?
Yes, sir.
All right. Alderman Kinsey?
I have a lady that, uh, serves with the Duffy Field Phoenix Program. And, um, I think she's one of the founders. And I feel that they have, um, hands and feet on the ground in that area. And I feel that she's a volunteer. She sits on many boards. Uh, I feel that with the things that she's been doing within the last eight years, would be a great fit. Uh, her husband, Jim Shout, he's an engineer and I feel that he serves with her. And I feel those two would be a great fit in that area. That's very familiar with the people and the things that the community need. So, those are my two candidates.
So, you want to go husband and wife duo as well?
Of course. That's a great team to have.
All right. Did you get those, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Astor?
No nominations.
Alderman Astor has no nominations. Alderman Royal?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Alderman Best pointed out, one of my candidates is Antoinette Bosky also. And so, she's already given you the profile, so I'll skip that. My second, uh, person is Mr. Mark Best, retired, uh, from the Director of Workforce Readiness and Special Programs at Craven Community College. I believe that he brings to the table a wealth of experience and knowledge. He's been boots on the ground for many years working with the residents in the revital, excuse me, in the redevelopment area. And, uh, I believe he has the assets. He was the, uh, part-time recruiter in basic skills in college career readiness programs. Even when we're looking at... Even when we're looking at the commission, we're looking at the various skill sets that it would need not only to develop the greater Duffy Field community, but also to develop the people. And so he was also the Director of the Workforce Readiness and Special Programs, community activist, Assistant Dean of Continuing Education, Director of Human Resources. And I think he would bring so, so many positive things that we need for the Redevelopment Commission. Those are my two.
All right. And Ms. Attorney, I assume that since one individual was nominated twice, they'll be on the ballot one time, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because it would dilute the vote if they were listed twice. Alderman Prill?
Brenda, before we get to my nomination, can, can we just review real quick the names that have been submitted?
Yes. We have Eric Thompson, Kelly Kaiser, Antoinette-
I'm sorry, what, the second one?
Kelly Kaiser. K.I.S.E.R.
Uh, just wanted to make sure I've got the information on these individuals.
There's an email from her.
Kaiser, okay.
Antoinette Boski.
Yep.
Jimmy Dillahun.
I'm sorry, the name?
Jimmy Dillahun.
Okay. I've got no information on her. No paperwork.
That was a verbal recommendation from Alderman Best.
Okay. This is part of the concern that I have, is that no information before me, I mean, other than what was verbally presented to me. And we're going to be asked to vote on these individuals. So I've gotten real concerned with the process. We're, we're trying to find the best possible people to put on various boards and commissions. And we have just, the, the process is to kind of rush through just to get a body put on there without really any serious discussion about the, the qualifications, the background, the benefits that these people could potentially bring. So, anyway, okay. I, I have that person's paperwork right now. And who else are we dealing with?
Ann Schout.
Okay. Again, no, no paperwork for Ms. Schout.
Jim Schout.
No paperwork for Mr. Schout.
Mark Best.
Mark Best. And then we also have Ken Dowd. Did you already give me his name?
He has not been nominated. That resume was shared just because he submitted that resume for the board.
A couple of weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Well, then, as much as I have a disdain for the process that we're going through-
Alderman Prill, just a point of clarification, you voted in affirmation of the process tonight.
I did. I did. And it was in part based on the earlier comment that I made, that we have not received paperwork on all the individuals who are being proposed tonight. I did not want to hold up the process, but at the same time, I think the board is rushing through this, and that's unfortunate to see. So with that, then I will offer the gentleman that had reached out to us two or three weeks ago, Mr. Kenneth Dowd. And I think everybody has received his paperwork two or three weeks ago, but let me just review his resume. Under community involvement, he's a graduate of the New Bern Police Citizens Police Academy Session. He's a graduate leadership Craven Chamber of Commerce. He's a member of Advisory Board Mediation Center of Eastern, Eastern Carolina, New Bern That, his educational background, San Diego, San Diego College of Business, University of Mount Olive, a BS in Management and Organizational Development, graduated with high honors in He's a senior workplace mediator, a volunteer with the Twin Rivers Workplace Mediation Program. Experience, actually his present experience, court reporter, New Bern Court Reporters, Inc. Warden Smith, he was the trusted estates administration paralegal. Human Resource Manager for Peak Performance Sports and Physical Therapy. Agency representative, paralegal, certified Department of Navy mediator at the Fleet Readiness Center, Cherry Court. Paralegal court reporter, total quality facilitator, the staff judge advocate Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. Litigation paralegal for Warden Smith, freelance court reporter, paralegal courts, court marshal, court reporter, legal services chief for the United States Marine Corps, retired. And the last individual would nominate my wife. She has over 30 years' experience in real estate and mortgage lending. She has extensive background as an owner and manager of real estate companies, in property management, in vacation rental and sales, long-term rentals, in land development and subdivision, as a mortgage loan officer. She's a community, involved in community lending, has experience with new construction as well, as well as rehabilitation of properties. She has served as a member of a Historic Preservation Committee in another jurisdiction that we lived in before relocating to New Bern. She's a North Carolina real estate broker, Pennsylvania real estate broker, New York real estate broker, New Jersey real estate broker. She has a North Carolina mortgage license and certified lender partner. She presently is in the mortgage loan origination field. She has extensive knowledge of real estate development, management, financing, experience in land acquisition, development, and subdivision processes, experienced property manager for individual homes and homeowner associations, exceptional financial literacy, including development and construction costs and financing, knowledge of local market trends and values, extensive knowledge of current residential lending products, and an advocate for pathways to homeownership costs. And those are my two nominations.
Thank you. Alderman Prill, Ms. Clerk, do you have those two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My two nominations first will be Ms. Sarah Proctor. Sarah is a native New Bernian. She graduated from ECU with a double major in political science and communication. She also has her law degree from the Uni, University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill. She was state bar of Georgia admitted in 2007, and North Carolina state bar in 2017. She's a good, a good standing member at all times. Currently, she, as of January 1 of this year, she is a partner with Parker Hudson Reiner and Dobbs LLP. And I believe, when I looked at the board and what they needed, I don't believe there's an attorney on the board anymore because Ms. Mosley started in that position, but when she was hired by our staff attorney, she resigned from that board. So Ms. Sarah Proctor, she is a resident. I want to be clear to, we'll, we'll get the clerk to verify this, but she is a resident and citizen of New Bern. She lives on Appenzell Lane. My second and final nomination is Ms. Sharon Bryant. I think most people know Sharon. She is, since 1999, has been the African-American Outreach Coordinator at Tryon Palace. She's very well-versed in the New Bern community. She's also very active in the Boys and Girls Club. And not too long ago, she was recognized as one of the 52 faces of the community. And I've known Sharon for several years now, graduated with her son, and I believe she could bring a lot of the community relations and knowledge to the table. So that's my two.
Wow. That's some good candidates here.
We do. So my recommendation, if the attorney is okay with it, it's probably going to take the clerk a little while to get all that put together. Could we just move on to the agenda and then come back to this?
Yes, sir. You can.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? I don't know if we want to sit here and wait for her to get all that together, look at each other, so. We will move on to item number 19, Attorney's Report.
Nothing like me.
You didn't help stall very well, Ms. Attorney. Mr. Manager, I have a feeling you'll do a better job at that.
I've got a few things to update the, the board on. First item is we want to remind everyone that New Bern 101, which we started a couple of years ago, the next session of that starts on February 23rd. We have eight sessions for that, and if citizens are interested in learning more about local government, this is a great opportunity to learn how to do that. Participants get to go to a variety of facilities, meet one-on-one with department heads, the governing board members as well, to learn more about what goes on with local government. It's a great program. It's free. If anyone is interested, they can reach out to us at City Hall, and we'll, we'll let you know how to sign up for that. I also want to give you an update. At the last board meeting, we were asked to come back to discuss the Redevelopment Commission. We talked about the projects that Alderman Astor is wanting to do. So we're still working with the Redevelopment Commission on providing some information from that, so we will be coming back to a future meeting on, on that. I want to update you on City Hall renovations. The elevator project is going along very well. They're getting ready to start working on the south side of the building where you're going to really be able to see the arch come together where the main entrance will be. Plaster work on the second and third floors on the staircase is getting ready to start tomorrow. So the second, third floors will be closed on the stairway for a few weeks. Should be back in operating by the time we come back for our next meeting here. So we do have some IT staff on the third floor. They'll be relocating down to the first floor. Also, mid-February, the brick repointing project will begin, and they're actually going to start on the backside of the building first, and then they're going to start on the Craven Street side, then work around to the Pollock Street side. So, so one contractor is working with the other contractor to make sure it's, it's a smooth process, and we're looking forward to that, that process beginning and it finishing up. The contractor estimates that taking approximately six months to complete. So there will be a lot of activity going on, not only inside but outside of City Hall over the next few months, so bear with us. Also, I sent the board an email earlier this week, actually just started the week off on a good, on a good foot, that we did receive a grant in the amount of 2.5 million from the North Carolina Emergency Management Fund for the Duffy Field Stormwater Project. And this is a construction grant. The majority of grants that, that we've been receiving lately are really for planning, so we are excited to have something, that we can actually do something with on this. So look out for some more information. Tisdale House update. I've heard no information from the Preservation Foundation, but I did speak with Dan Tower, who was the, basically the person Preservation Foundation ended up working with on that project. Dan told me that they closed on the property yesterday. So he has already met with our Public Utilities and Development Services staff regarding the move. He has already mobilized crews to begin digging footers. They've already got an excavator out on the Rim Avenue site, so he is ready to go. He, he's got his movers working on things. So right now, what they're trying to do is get a date set up to coordinate with Development Services, with Electric Utility, and also the telecommunication companies to make sure everyone's on board. So I should have another update in about a week or so, and we're looking forward to watching as he renovates that house. Next item I have for you, Kim, if you'd like to pass something out. And I'm really excited about this. In 1991, the Government Finance Officers Association established the Popular Annual Financial Report Program. This is done to encourage and assist state and local governments to extract information from their annual comprehensive financial reports to produce high-quality, popular financial reports specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and interested parties. This is the first time that the city of New Bern has, has done this. And so, well, once you get this, we're going to go over this. This is already available on our website, and as we speak, PIO is, is sending a press release out, putting it on social media as well. Really good document, and, and I can't tell you how proud I am of Kim Ostrom and, and the Finance Department and Helen Stevens, who actually spearheaded this. And so, as you open this up, you'll see the purpose of the report, and there, there's contents that, that tells what all is in this. There's the manager's message that gives a little bit more information about this report. Throughout the report, it mentions visit the website for one thing or another, so to help out with that, we have a list of QR codes at the very first beside the manager's message where you can click on that and go straight to some of that information. We've got information from, about the Board of Aldermen and also a map of the ward. We've got our organizational chart, and of course, at the top of that chart is our citizens. Then we have some general information about New Bern with some general demographics about the city, and we have a section on Commitment to Excellence, recognizing the three departments that are nationally accredited. We have so, also some information about governmental activities, our net financial position, and information about our fund balance. We also have information about our general fund revenues, and it goes back over a period of a few years to give you an idea of how things have gone, and also lists expenditures over the last three years. Then we have good information about grant fund initiatives, and it talks about the 23 grants that we have received in fiscal year 22. And fiscal year basically started at June, July 1, 2021, and ended June 30, 2022. So this is from the past year. Then we highlight an area on property taxes. We list the top 10 taxpayers of the city of New Bern. And then we look at a comparable of municipal tax rates in Craven County, and where we stand, and then the assessed value. Then we have information on outstanding debt, how our debt is ticking off over the next few years, which is very informative. And then we go into general government. So there's a page that talks about administration and all of the divisions under that, some of the projects they have completed, the budget, the amount of staff. Then we focus on our public safety, where we get into fire, rescue, our police. Then we talk about development services, and we've got some information about our resiliency program. Then we have some information about parks and recreation, and there's a highlight on, on Martin Mary Emma Park that we opened earlier last year. Then we focus on public works. And then we do our business-type activities, which is generally our enterprise funds. And so there's going to be some information on the water fund, the sewer fund, the electric fund, solid waste fund. So a lot of good information, and it's very easy to read, it's very understandable, and it's, it's really a companion to our annual financial report as well, but this is really a quick glance where anyone can look at it, and they'll be able to take something away from it. So, great document. Look forward to giving some feedback, not only to the governing board, but the citizens as well on this. Any questions that you may have?
Very nice.
Yes, City.
We've been working on a lot of things, and so you're going to see a lot more over the next several months, but, and this is also going to be available at City Hall. We're working to get some copies at the library as well, so check this out.
So, Mr. Eus, where did you, where is this located on our website?
It's on the financial page, and there, there's probably going to be a link on the main page as well.
Okay. All right.
And also, Kim has passed out a little business card. We're going to have those, these at various departments as well, where you can just click on that QR code, it'll take you right to this.
Okay. Good job.
Very good.
Okay. Last thing I have, and we talked about this maybe about, um, six weeks ago, but we finally got this earlier last week. It's the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award that we talked about. So we, we had a certificate up here last time, but now we've got the, the big award. And so I'd like to ask the governing board to come down here. Tanya Harms, she is the, the finance staff person that really worked hard on preparing the budget for the department, and so she's going to be here anytime that we're assigned. I want that to, the board to take down your picture of the essay.
All right, Mr. Hughes, is that all you have?
That's all I have tonight, sir.
All right, Ms. Clerk, do you have the ballots ready for the nominations?
I do, and I'll also report that I've looked at the addresses provided on the resumes or the emails of interest, and they all appear to be in the city limits of New Bern. Those that were nominated verbally, I have looked up their property records, and they appear to also live in the city limits of New Bern.
Very good. So Board, what I think is probably most prudent, we'll vote here on these ballots. We'll turn these into the clerk, then we'll do new business while she tallies them, so we can kind of keep the meeting flowing. I don't think we all want to be here all night, so.
Three votes.
Correct.
We signed?
Yeah. So we're on record, we'll know who voted for who. Thank you.
Question. So suppose you want, can you vote for the same person twice? Is that considered three votes?
We already discussed that, and there was no, you have to vote for three separate people.
Oh, you said three separate people? I must have missed that. Okay, thank you.
All right, we need some Jeopardy music. So let's move on to new business while the clerk is tallying that up. And we'll start with, I'll start with Alderman Prill this time with new business.
Yes, I have just a couple of things to report on. Over the last week or two, I've had an opportunity to meet with a couple of different groups of representatives, residents of the community. The first were the group of residents who were members of HYDRA. They had asked for the opportunity to sit down with myself just to talk about a couple of different items, one being the proposed sale of the Talbot Lot, some discussion about strategic comprehensive planning for the city. And the last item was general discussion about the Municipal Services District. And at that point, I'd also recommend or indicated to them that I've made a recommendation that we, that the board, look at reconstituting the MSD Advisory Board. At this point, that is still under review by the city manager and the attorney's office. I would anticipate that that issue will be coming before the board in the relatively near future, and I would hope that the board would be supportive of reestablishing and reconstituting the MSD Advisory Board. The second group, along with the city manager, we met with the representatives of the Riverside Historic Association, who presented a petition requesting that the speed limit on a portion of National Avenue be reduced from 35 to 25 miles per hour. That matter has been referred to staff for their review and recommendation. I would anticipate also that that matter will be coming before the board in the relatively near future as well. The last item, just general comments, concern. Mayor, this has been in connection with the recent appointments that you have made to the Housing Authority, that being the appointment of Ms. Freddie Bengal and Mr. Dana Outlaw. I acknowledge upfront that you were certainly well within your authority as mayor to make these appointments. Where I have a concern is that all other appointments that are made to our various boards and committees, commissions, are always done in a public meeting. Your appointment, though, happened prior, or basically not at a public meeting, and I'm not sure why that decision was made by you to do that. There was no urgency to get these two new members onto the Housing Authority. The Authority's last meeting was a very routine meeting, so there was no matters that had some urgency to it. So I think the appointments could have been held off until tonight's meeting. I've also got a concern with regards to the appointments of these two individuals, again, not being done in a public session. We're all very sensitive and have certainly heard a lot of concerns being expressed by members of the community about a lack of transparency. And unfortunately, this action, in my mind, just falls right back into the issue of a lack of transparency. And again, I acknowledge that you were well within your authority to make the appointments, but the way it was handled, I think it just reflects very badly on all of us when this board had absolutely no say, and as far as I know, no advanced knowledge of appointments being made. So those are just my general comments about that topic.
I thank you for that, and I'll be happy to address every single one of them. You made a comment that there was no urgency in making those appointments. And I would agree with you, there seems to be no urgency with the Housing Authority whatsoever. It's been four, over four years, and we still have buildings that were flooded, Hurricane Farms, and they're still standing today. I asked, along with two other members at the time of the Board of Aldermen, for them to hire a FEMA consultant. The Housing Authority refused to do so. I think we all know that a FEMA consultant has been extremely beneficial for this board in the city of New Bern, where we had a $600,000 recreation center that we received $7.5 million for from FEMA. The same opportunity exists with the New Bern Housing Authority to provide affordable housing for that community of Trent Court. They refused to do so. There's been a lack of action, so that's the reason for the urgency of the appointments that I made. Secondly, I would ask the clerk, Ms. Blanco, how many times was a Housing Authority appointment made during a public board meeting?
Never, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if something's being done, in my mind, improperly over however long a period of time, continuing that practice doesn't solve it.
Well, I guess it's.
Yet all other appointments are made in a public session. There is absolutely no reason why the appointment of these two individuals could not have been handled in a public meeting.
That's a matter of opinion, but general statute gives the mayor the unilateral authority to make those decisions and those appointments, and it doesn't have to be made in a public meeting.
No, I understand that. From a parent's standpoint, from a public standpoint, we will all be criticized because of this lack of transparency when all of us were not participants in that. So it reflects badly on the full board.
Well, I appreciate your opinion, but I disagree. It should not be a reflection on this board because this board has no input in that decision. That's the mayor's decision. Anything else tonight, sir?
No, that's it.
Alderman Royal?
Yes. I'd like, as a way of reminder, just to remind the residents of the upcoming town hall meeting that is scheduled for February 6, at 6:00 PM at the West New Bern Rec Center. That area includes streets such as Woodland Avenue, Monterey Circle, High Tree, Egress, Pine Tree, Manning, and on and on and on. I labeled it the West New Bern area. That's what I still label it as. But I would certainly like to let the residents know the vicinity that we will be meeting, and it will be at West New Bern Rec Center. I'm so, again, appreciative for the mayor and the city manager, along with the Director of Public Works and the Stormwater Superintendent and our Chief of Police that will be accompanying me to those meetings. And we will just simply talk about the issues and concerns that the residents have. We have no topic, the meeting is community, the topic is community-driven. And so, folks, if you're listening, please join us on February 6 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Alderman Astor?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Well, there is something tonight. It's Alderman Astor's birthday, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Forty-nine again?
Thirty-nine.
Plus thirty-nine. Not quite. Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, Mayor. I too would, in reference to the appointments to the Housing Authority Board, I too would like to see, just like you suggested to us and implemented, the fact of, as Alderman, we bring two nominees to you that we may feel that citizens that serve within our ward may want to serve on the Housing Authority Board. So if we would just have the opportunity to present those names to you moving forward, I think that would be a plus to us, Alderman, and to our citizens. And I too, yeah, if we could do that, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Alderman Bresson?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Madam Clerk, do you have a tally?
I do.
Do we have a top? Any ties at the top?
No.
Okay, good.
We'll first review the ballots as cast by each person on the board. Alderman Prill voted for Antoinette Bosky, Lori Ann Prill, and Sharon Bryant. Alderman Royal, Antoinette Bosky, Mark Best, and Sharon Bryant. Alderman Astor, Eric Thompson, Sarah Proctor, and Sharon Bryant. Mayor Outlaw, Kelly Kaiser, Sarah Proctor, and Sharon Bryant.
Mayor Odom for the record. You've done really good at that so far.
Don't feel bad, I've done it.
Let's not start with Os. Alderman Kinsey, Jimmy Dillahunt, Ann Shout, and Jim Shout. Alderman Best, Antoinette Bosky, Jimmy Dillahunt, and Sarah Proctor. Alderman Brinson, Kelly Kaiser, Sarah Proctor, and Sharon Bryant. So the tally, Sharon Bryant with five, Sarah Proctor with four, Antoinette Bosky with three, Kelly Kaiser and Jimmy Dillahunt both with two, and then Eric Thompson, Ann Shout, Jim Shout, Mark Best, and Lori Ann Prill with one. So the appointments will be for Sharon Bryant and Sarah Proctor.
Okay. Now, Board, as I mentioned earlier, we have to decide which one's going to fill which seat. So I'm open for whatever.
I would say the, I would offer, one with the most votes gets the longest seat.
That's a great, great idea. Is that your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Who is the person?
Ms. Sharon Bryant would have the 2026 expiration date, and then Sarah Proctor would have the 2024 expiration date. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations to Ms. Bryant and Ms. Proctor. I do not have any new business tonight. I believe we do need a closed session, though, Ms. Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, pursuant to 143-318-1184, to discuss the location expansion of industry or businesses to include economic development incentives.
Need a motion to go into closed session? Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are in closed session.